I call this January 28, 2019, meeting of the Board of Selectment to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first item we have is the approval of the minutes of the January 14, 2019, regular meeting. Madam Chair, yes? I move that we approve the meeting minutes of January 14, 2019.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have a question. So, under public comments on your minutes, should we add that, because it describes fully what Mrs. Kraus was concerned about with Tridebby, but she was also asking about the property adjacent to Tridebby? And I think I would like to see it added in the minutes that she asked about the property adjacent and was advised that the property would be considered at ZBA on January 15.
How does the rest of the board feel?
No objection.
That's fine. I mean, if she said that and it's a concern, then...
I reviewed the video.
Yeah, no, I remember her saying it, yeah.
So, Diane, can we amend them to... So, can we approve them as amended? Or do you want to see it in writing first?
No, I'm okay with just approving it if that's included.
Okay. So, has amended, Leslie?
Has amended. Yes.
Seconded, yeah.
Okay. Everyone in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. This is the meeting, the time is 7:00 PM. We have Bill, I R., Town Auditor, presentation of fiscal year 2018 Audit Report. And before we start, I'd like to acknowledge we have the Financial Planning Committee here, David DeVries, Scott Rogers, and Tom Spataro. Do you want to call your group into session?
It's not necessarily...
Oh, they don't have to.
It's not really a joint meeting, but through the invitation, Tradition is to invite them, and Tradition is for the Chair to allow them to ask questions because they were invited by the Board.
Okay. And from the Appropriations, we have George Pringle. Did I miss anybody from any other committees that were invited? No. Okay. Bill?
Thank you. Thank you for having me back. Another year has passed us by. We'll start with a brief summary of the audit. And I guess, as I've been able to report for a number of years now, the first bullet says that, you know, we have to audit your general ledger and what Jason keeps... You know, Jason keeps the books of the town, so we have to audit the ledger. And one of the things we look at is, do we have to make adjustments because there are some issues in the ledger? And, once again, this year, we did not have to make any adjustments. There are adjustments we have to make to convert what you're required to do for budgetary and statutory purposes to what the financial statements show, and we're regulated by GAAP presentation, generally accepted accounting principles. So, the good news is, other than making those entries, which you have to do in every government audit because you're keeping a statutory base, general ledger, we didn't have to make any audit adjustments. The second bullet, one of the things we have to look at is how the internal control of the town is functioning. So, we do various tests to make sure that approvals where they're required are being done. You know, there's a million things to do in the audit, but we try to hit some of the major issues of the warrants properly approved, that kind of thing. If we find a significant problem, we have to categorize it as a material weakness or a significant deficiency, and there were none identified. You know, if it makes you all feel good, I do have government clients that have these issues, so, you know, it's good that you don't, and haven't for quite a while. The other thing, one of the other things we're required to do under government auditing standards is look at compliance with laws and regulations. So, if you get a grant, there's a whole list of things you have to do to comply with that particular grant requirement, the grant requirements. There's laws related to how the budget gets adopted, that sort of stuff. So, we did not find anything that we had a flag for in the compliance with laws and regulation area. And the audit report, of course, is unqualified, and that would be the case because there were no major audit adjustments or errors in the financial statements. And lastly, everybody's favorite topic, we were required to implement GASB-75 for OPEB. We talked last year about how we had to implement GASB-74 for OPEB. Last year, 74 related to your trust, your OPEB trust. This relates to the liability, and we're going to talk about that a couple of slides down. It was not fun, not for anything on this end, it just from the accounting requirements. It was kind of a difficult year for me to get through that, and every firm that does governments. The first slide we look at is how the revenues and expenses have changed, and I know there's two new people, so I just want to say, you know, rather than looking at just one year or looking at the change from the current year or the year before, we like to show five-year, kind of gives you an idea of a trend for what's happening over time. The other thing I want to do is, when I talk about some of these slides, I try to emphasize a little bit what the bond rating agencies look for. So, when you look at this number, and you'll see some footnotes at the bottom because there's been some specific reasons that some of these numbers were a little high in a given year. But in general, you know, you want to be in that 3% to 5% range. If the bond rating agencies saw numbers that were really high, they would say, "Well, how long is this going to be sustainable? How long can this growth be that, you know, that sustainable?" And if they're really low, they're wondering if you're struggling to meet your obligations. So, with the 2.5% law in this state, you know, you in general try to see something in the 3% to 5% range. And even though you've had some years where some of the numbers have been over, and like I said, we tried to explain that on the bottom, like, for example, in '14, your revenue number was up 6.6% from the prior year. Well, that's a little bit of a high number, but that was the year the new meals tax kicked in. And so, that was a one-time... You know, there's one-time issues that sometimes affect these numbers. Overall, the five-year average, you're right around a little over 4% on each side, and that's really a good place to be. And the bond rating agencies would look at that favorably, would look at those, these kind of numbers favorably. The next slide, we look at how you're doing budget to act. So, you set a budget, Town Meeting sets the budget on the expense side, and based on the revenues, you project. And so, we look at how the revenue, the actual numbers on a budgetary basis compare, and expense numbers compare to your budget. And I've said this for a number of years, but the sweet spot for me is to try to be around 2% on each side. If these numbers get low, and I've had some towns that, you know, if you look at some of these numbers, they're under 1%. Your budget's getting to the point where it's so tight, if you have a bad year, if there's a downturn in the economy or something, you could end up in a lot of trouble. You could have a revenue deficit. You could have trouble meeting the expenses that are going to grow, like health insurance, regardless of what happens. So, you know, you don't want the budgets to be set to a point where your variances are up in the 5%, because then you've got, like, way too many cushions in that budget. And we've talked about, as I've said, you know, the people that have been here and allowed me to bore them for many years will know that we've talked about this 2% sort of target range. You know, I wouldn't be alarmed if you were at 1.5% or 2.5%, but I think you're in a really good place there. And then, the last two columns want to show what free cash you've used to help offset the budget. And one of the really smart things the Boards approved many, several years ago, I guess, is to really try to keep the free cash number that's being allocated to the operating budget at pretty much a fixed level. And you can see that you did go from 650 to 675, but you've kind of stayed right in that range. And then, you've implemented a plan, which has been, you know, great, and I've sort of borrowed that trying to get some of my other towns to go in this direction, which you allow yourself the flexibility that if you have a good year on that previous slide with the budget to actuals, and your free cash is a little higher, you can put more towards capital. If you have less, you can put, you'll put less towards capital. So, that last column is nice because not only does that give you the flexibility in a bad year that you're not dependent on it for the operating budget, and, "Oh, my God, what am I going to do? We needed that $2 million to fund our operating costs." You could take a year and say, "You know what? The economy's turned down. We don't have a lot of extra free cash, so we're going to defer some of the..." Or borrow, you know, some of the things. If we can defer it for a year and just do maintenance on a fire truck, we'll do that. If we really need it and we have to borrow, that's fine. But you've really pretty much eliminated your borrowing, except for the big stuff, after this plan was approved by the Board. And I, you know, like I said, I've used this to tell other towns that I think this is a great place to get to if you can. And things like the meals tax and other things have certainly helped you, you know, to get to that point, but good planning has helped a lot. So, here are your reserves. When the bond rating agencies look at towns, they pretty much look at free cash. They may use a different term, because this is a, free cash is a Commonwealth of Massachusetts term, but they look at free cash and stabilization. And so, we look at those numbers to say, A, what are they and how are they trending? And the target for the town has always been, after the subsequent town meeting, you want to be in that 5% to 10% range, that last column. And so, you stayed in that. You've been, you know, you've dropped down a little bit, really not that much, starting... John told me this earlier, which was very helpful, thank you. Starting in 2015, the town started appropriating $250,000 a year towards...
$200,000.
$200,000, sorry, towards the stabilization fund, because as your budgets grow every year, even if you, you know, really didn't do anything, the percentages are going to start to drop. So, putting that extra money in the stabilization has helped to keep that, those percentages up a little bit. You have seen a small drop in that second to last column, which really comes over here and is reflective of the fact that your budget to actuals are getting tighter. Budgets are getting tighter. Revenues are getting tighter. At the end of '18, remember I said that 2%, you're inching down closer to that 1%. So, hopefully, if we look at this again next year, we might see a little upturn in the '19 numbers. You're not in a bad place yet, but you know, you're starting to get down. You don't really want to get below 1%, although I have towns that do. OPEB, okay. So, everybody here is probably, on the Board, has probably already heard about this, but OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's essentially the retiree health insurance. And GASB, that regulates government accounting, has said people, the liability for people's retirement benefits after they retire need to be put on the books as they're employed. So, when they retire, the entire estimated liability for the health insurance benefits that the town has to pay for the rest of their life is on the books as a liability. It involves a lot of estimates. You have to hire an actuary who does a study. So, that's the first column. Obviously, what would stand out to me is that jump in '17 to '18, and that is exclusively because of the change from GASB-45 to GASB-75. They changed some of the requirements of the assumptions that the actuary has to use, particularly with the discount rate. So, it isn't so much that that liability, I mean, it did take a huge jump in terms of the actual raw number, but it's more because what's embedded in the actuarial study to make up that number, the requirements from GASB changed. Hopefully, now that 75 is in, that won't happen again. But you never know. That middle column is, you know, obviously, a very positive thing, where you've been putting money into the OPEB trust fund since 2015, and so, you're up to $2.4 million at the end of 2018. I know it's tough, because you feel, and John always feels like, you know, we're just chasing this number that keeps growing, but it's a very positive thing. Bond rating agencies, it's one of the first things they ask me if I'm on a call, you know, what the plans are, what the town is doing towards OPEB. They want, they realize that it's going to take a long time for most communities to fund this liability, but what they really want to see is a commitment and growth in that middle column. And you've done that and built it into the budget, which is great. Last column is the net pension liability, so that is your share of the unfunded liability of the Worcester Regional Retirement System. And I was saying to John and Jason earlier, good news, at least it went down a little bit from '17 to '18. But again, that's just like the OPEB. There's so many assumptions, and assumptions change over time. You get that number directly from the regional system, so you're kind of a little bit at the mercy of what their actuary does. But it's good that that stabilized. It may go up a little bit in '19, I guess, is that what we were saying? It may go up a little bit in '19. But the good news on that is that the state, at least at this point, has mandated that these unfunded liabilities get amortized and hopefully eliminated by 2035.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you. Have to ask every year. So, the idea here is that you're actually, in your annual assessment from the regional system, there is a built-in amount that you're paying now over and above what you used to pay, because these assessments have really climbed in the last few years. The idea is that that $27 million between the additional assessments and the earnings on the investments will, over time, by 2035, in a perfect world, that will be eliminated. And although I don't think I will be standing here at that point, you know, the question then becomes, well, the extra money that's been going into that, you know, could that be retargeted to OPEB at some point? So, make sure you remember that. Debt, this, what I like to show here is the, you know, overall debt. Again, it's the same thing. If you just see constant growth in this debt number, that's a concern. Your debt level is low, relatively low compared to other towns. So, as you can see, other than the jump in '16, when you did the big borrowing for the school, your debt has, you know, has been, has either come down or been pretty stable. I don't remember what you did in '15. Was it '15 and '16 were both schools?
Yeah, we split the cost of Lincoln Street School into two issuances over two years. It was roughly a $15 million project that we were, we are share of it.
Your share of it. You don't see it in these numbers, but that's where that earlier slide about the free cash that's allocated towards capital has really come into play, too, because you were borrowing for all that stuff at one point in the past. And now, pretty much, other than the big projects, the free cash is funding those capital items every year, so you're not seeing more growth in the debt number because of the free cash policy. Again, you know, it was a great decision. And finally, fixed assets. I show this for a couple of reasons. One is, it's the biggest number on the asset side of your financial statements, obviously. And so, you know, for anybody that may not know, the capital assets is really anything like buildings, roads, water and sewer, infrastructure, vehicles, land, all of that stuff. So, again, one of the things the bond rating agencies will look at is how are they, how is the town doing in reinvesting in their capital? And while you had that huge jump in, from 2015 to 2016, because a lot of the school addition took place in fiscal '16, you're still be, you're still able to add each year. And that's a combination of that capital, again, we talked about from free cash, as well as Chapter 90 and some other things. And so, on both sides, which, you know, the gross amount and then the amount after depreciation, you definitely don't want to see that year after year trending down. The bond rating agencies will know right away, this community's having trouble reinvesting in the things that they need to do long-term. You know, equipment's getting old, roads are getting old. So, this 7%, five-year average on both sides is, again, is a very positive number. Oh, that's it? Everybody's disappointed, I'm sure.
Thank you.
So, that's a very quick...
Thank you. Jason, thank you. Okay. Questions from the Board? Comments? Leslie?
Well, as usual, Bill, I want to thank you very much. I always like the way that you explain it every year. It does help, you know, even though we've heard a lot of this before. In terms of general definitions and things, it's always helpful to hear those things again. And it's nice that it's sort of a status quo sort of situation in terms of how our community is run and how the finances are approached, operational, capital, so that we don't have outstanding issues that you come to us every year and say, "You know, you really need to work on this." And there are other communities that are facing it. What you're actually saying is, you're doing great, and there are other communities who are not, relatively speaking, in some of these items. So, I just want to thank you very much for explaining all that and doing all your work. And I want to thank Jason as well, and John, and the way you're approaching things with Kim, and I just think it's a wonderful effort, and thank you very much.
Yeah, Bill, you had talked about the assumptions that are made. That's the transition from GASB-45 to 75?
Right. Yeah, they changed some of the requirements for... So, built into OPEB, there's, as I said, there's so many assumptions, right? There's the future cost of how health insurance is going to grow, and we don't know. Is it going to grow at 5% a year? Is it going to grow at 10% a year? Health costs tend to grow each year. So, they have to build in that factor. They build in life expectancy. They build in an estimate of what your investments, based on where you put your money, and you've put it into PRACT, they'll do, they'll look at PRACT's investment policy and investment allocations. We were just talking about that. And they'll look at, you know, what the long-term rate of return is expected. Also, the more you're funding your OPEB trust, the more they can take that into account, because over time, you know, that just continues to grow and grow, your interest on interest and all that. So, yeah, they tweaked some of the, you know, it's not as if all of a sudden you had more employees. That growth really came, and it was, a big part of it was the discount rate, which was a change from 74 to 45 to 75, sorry.
Okay. So, I mean, in a manner of speaking, it's, we're chasing a moving target because periodically these assumptions are going to change, the number's going to change, it might improve favorably or unfavorably.
Yeah, and...
From our standpoint, our strategy is to simply continue to fund toward that liability.
Exactly. Exactly. And yeah.
Control what you can control.
And it gets frustrating when you're putting money aside, and it just feels like it's, you know, growing at a faster rate than you can do it. But, you know, GASB's always probably going to tweak some of the stuff along the way. And, you know, we don't know. We don't know in five years if we're back to, again, something else we talked about a little while, you know, we back to 15% interest rates. That, in some weird way, would help you, you know, if you have a lot of money in your OPEB trust.
We have questions. Tim?
Thanks. This is great. Just a question on the long-term debt. You'd said that the Town of Northborough's debt is low compared to other communities. Is that, is that on a dollar basis, or is that on a percentage basis, or some sort of ratio of like a debt to total assets?
Yeah, it's looking at the size of the community. It's not, you know, like a gross dollar. I don't have, you know, I could get it, DOR may have some published, but you're on the... Do you know specifically where you fall?
Yeah. So, we have a debt policy that our debt should be no more than between 5% and 10% of our operating budget, our debt service. There is a debt limit that's calculated based on your equalized valuation that the state does. It's kind of like during the heyday of the real estate market, when you'd call up and you want to refinance, and they tell somebody like me at the time, who was making no money at all, "Oh, you can afford a $598,000 house." And I say, "You're crazy." "Oh, you can, you know, you can afford that." That's the upper limit, and I want it, it's like $126 million or some crazy number like that. It's in the budget. But the rule of thumb that bond rating agencies look at is they want to see your debt service between, you know, roughly 5% and 10% of your operating budget. Ours is hovering right now around 5%. And Bill spoke to this. You know, we don't bond and issue debt for things like trucks and even roofs on schools. We have a free cash policy. We do a lot of pay-as-you-go capital. We do, however, just like in your personal life, finance large things like a house purchase and maybe a car. For us, you know, it's buildings, big, large land acquisitions, and sometimes large, you know, apparatus, although we've actually been able to pay cash for those since our policy went in place. By the way, the policy went in place in fiscal '10, and starting in fiscal year '12, we pretty much pay cash for most of our smaller capital items. So, the beauty of it is, by not charging the credit card, you pay off the debt, then you only finance the large things that you really ought not to pay cash for. You know, there's an equity argument to be made as to why a large asset that has a 20-year useful life should be paid for by the people as they're using it. So, it should be financed. You shouldn't try to save and build a library in one, you know, in one year. That doesn't make sense from an equity standpoint. But our debt service is at the lower end of that range. It's there because we don't charge things and finance things unnecessarily. But it also is by a conscious design. We're creating capacity so that when large projects like the Lincoln Street School come on board and you are able to finance, it's a $25.5 million project, $15 million of that was our share, $10 million or so was a grant from the state. And when you do that, you see the debt go up to 6%, 6.5%, right? But then, since we're not adding to it for day-to-day trucks and police cruisers and DPW trucks, it starts to go back down. And so, the next large project that we have, and we're going to be talking about this at Town Meeting in April, is going to be the fire station building project, the first design and land acquisition phase of it, but that's going to be a significant project. And we will hopefully approve and issue debt for that, and our debt service will go up to 6.5% or so, and then it'll continue to move in that range. The key is, you know, when we go to Town Meeting, we talk about, well, what can we afford? Now, everybody makes a personal decision, you know, what they can afford. What your job and the Financial Planning Committee's job, and the Appropriations Committee's job, and my job is to make sure that as a corporate entity, we're clear about what we can afford. And so, when we go into Town Meeting, it's clear that we have a low debt ratio for our operating budget, and that the timing and the planning through the capital plan is such that we know we need to make investments in these buildings. And you do that on a planned basis, so you're not, you don't have five large building projects within two years of each other, and the debt kind of moves up and down. But we always tend to stay in that lower range because we have this excellent policy and this financial discipline to pay as we go and to plan well. And that's something I think that we've done. Bill mentioned, you know, kind of taking our policies and our process to his other clients. The state and the Governor's Office and the best practices use Northborough's free cash policy, how we do our capital planning and our budgeting as a sample and as a shining example of how you should do things if you're managing well. And that, I think that speaks volumes to this town. And a lot of the people that serve on these Boards and Committees, they were here when we had these difficult discussions about that free cash policy, because it meant getting off the treadmill of interjecting these one-time revenues into the operating budget. So, all in all, our, you heard me talk at great length in December, our financial condition is strong. This is one of the main reasons why, because we have as an entity, and that means the school department as well, and Joan Frank is sitting over there, we all agreed to these financial policies and these rules of engagement, and we live by these financial principles, and it gives us repeated success. And that's probably a longer answer than you were looking for, but this stuff is absolutely critical. I know, I know we talk a lot about, at meetings, you know, people are worried about, you know, recreational marijuana, you know, duplexes being built. These things are important, yes, but the foundation of our organization that allow us to do everything we do, excellent schools, you know, police, fire, DPW, infrastructure, that's all based on sound financial principles and then executing that during the course of the year. So, you know, Bill is, you know, he's our auditor. He's an accountant, all right? So, he comes in, he's like Joe Friday, just the facts, right? If there's a problem, he's going to let you know. But let me just say this, you know, on the front end, we receive a national award for our budget, eight consecutive years in a row. On the back end, we have over 10 years of audits that you could eat off of. As a Board of Directors, nothing should excite you more than reading that management letter and seeing that there are no material deficiencies or weaknesses in our finances. It means on the front end, we plan well, and then we execute well, and then someone comes in and checks to make sure that we executed well. And that's the report you're getting tonight, is, you know, it's not just saying, "Oh, we got a pretty budget, and we did a good job planning on the front end," but on the back end, everything that we said we were going to do, we did, and the execution is really flawless. And I do want to acknowledge Jason Little directly. He's our Town Accountant. Jason does a phenomenal job for us, and, you know, he's a, he's a, the main reason why we have these clean audits. But it's the policy direction and the collaboration, working with all the Boards and Committees and the School Committee, in making sure that we do this stuff well, and we're not going into Town Meeting fighting and arguing over this stuff. So, again, I'm obviously very proud of the organization. I'm proud of the audit, and I'm proud of the sense of collaboration and the way that we've worked together. It's easy to do something well once, or to do it in one quick cycle. We have a decade in this town of award-winning budgets on the front end, clean audits on the back end, and going to Town Meeting with unanimous support of every member of every Board and Committee for every budget and every capital project. There is nobody else that I'm aware of that has that kind of success record. And again, for your support and the Boards and Committees that are here, you know, it's everybody working together that makes that possible, so.
Yeah. Thank you for that. It's, sometimes I know that people have a tendency to look at numbers and come to their own conclusions about stuff. Like, I look at these numbers... Like, I look at these numbers and I know that that's a very impressive debt total for, for, for a town of this size to just have that debt. It's, it's outstanding, but somebody else may look at that and be like, wow, there's twenty-seven million dol, like, it's just perspective on the number so that, adding some context to that is very helpful. Sometimes it's not just a number, sometimes you need to look at percentages or comparisons versus other things that will help people better understand.
The other thing is this-
Information that they're looking at.
Through the chair, if I may, this data that you see, you just saw this, but you saw it presented by the financial team and the financial trend monitoring. You know, everything that Bill watches, everything that the bond rating agencies watch, that dashboard, we spent a lot of time, uh, in December going through all these indicators. We talked at great death, uh, depth about our debt, our financial reserves, our OPEB liabilities and, and what we're doing about all those, things that were favorable, things that were unfavorable, areas that we had policies specifically, uh, put in place to address these issues. So, as a, as a board and as a financial boards and committees, you know exactly where we stand, the good, the bad, the ugly, uh, and you know, uh, when we make a decision to build a fire station, you know exactly where we stand in terms of that ratio. As a corporate entity, you know whether or not we can afford to do that building project. And, you know, again, that's our job to give you context and to give you real information so that when you're asked to stand up at town meeting and make a recommendation, because that is your job, to make a recommendation to people who aren't going to look at this information at such a, a level of detail, that you're doing it from a position of knowledge and strength and understanding and confidence. You know we can afford this because you've seen the measures, you've tracked them and you know that this is something that as an, a corporate entity, you know, we can afford. And more importantly, you also know what our levels of investment are for capital. You also know what it looks like with depreciation, you know what it looks like controlled for inflation because we give you all that analysis.
Yeah. I'll just say, it, it's, it's nice being a, a new member of the board to see that audits aren't something to be feared, but something to actually be-
We love it.
-excited about embraced, you know, it's, I've been with organizations where you get the notice that an audit's coming and there's, it's not good and it's nice to see that audits, you know.
You should be around when we have our bond ratings. I love, it's one of my favorite calls of the year when we issue debt. I absolutely-
I get so excited.
I can't wait to tell them all the great stuff that we've done.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. For the good results. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jason, one more time, thanks. Thank you, Jason. Okay. It's past the hour seven fifteen PM. Omar Alzair, Karam Auto Sales Incorporated. Consider an application is submitted by Omar Alzair, Karam Auto Sales Incorporated for a Class Two license for premises located at two eighty-one B West Main Street. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes.
You look, you look a little young to be the applicant. So, if you just want to describe a little bit about what you plan to do there?
Uh, sure. Uh, well, uh, basically, it's, um, it's at two eighty, two eighty-one, uh, B, uh, West Main Street, Northboro. I think it's existing license, but it's been vacant for, I think, a year and a half now or maybe, forgot how long it's been vacant. So, I just, one real license to sell cars there, used, used cars.
Okay. And the police department's okay and we've gone over in the fire department with the sighting of the cars and, and there's only to be eleven cars there and you're okay with that condition?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Questions from the board? Leslie?
Um, well, two things. The question is, are you all set with the snow removal? I know that, that's kind of a funny area.
I know, it's, it's, it's actually a bad corner, but what we do, um, we push the snow to the side of the building and it, we have, we have plenty of room to keep the snow there. Um, it, it, I know it's, it's, it's a just bad shape where is the building set, but, um, what we do, I, I've been there before the other side, so I'm leasing right now the, the other side. So, um, what we do, we just push the snow to the side of the building, which is, it's actually, there's a lot of room there.
Okay. Okay, so you're comfortable with that? Awesome. And I just want to thank you very much for doing business in Northborough.
Oh, thank you.
I know that you have your business up in the center of town and, uh, it's, it's just wonderful to have long-term businesses.
Well, thank you for, um, for everything you guys been supporting me all these years and I'm very proud to be a Northboro resident. I am, I am.
Well, we thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the application by Karam Auto Sales Incorporated for a Class Two license for premises located at two eighty-one B West Main Street with the following conditions: no more than eleven vehicles on the site; snow removal must be done with equipment on the site and not on Route Twenty; no vehicle at any time may be parked on the sidewalk or in any way that might interfere with traffic safety; and no storage of flammable liquids or gases shall be allowed without a permit and the approval of the groundwater advisory board if required.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Good luck. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to both of you for coming.
Say thank you for giving that last.
Yeah.
Say that?
Thank you. It's your cuteness. Okay, reports. Julianne.
Uh, just a couple of things. There's an update on the Whitewoods project. The contract has been signed with DBBW, which is the architectural firm, and so now we can move ahead with, um, preserving the building. And I'd like to congratulate John and all the departments and staff for winning the award for annual town report. That's it from me.
I have no report tonight, thank you.
Leslie?
Okay. I just wanted to throw out another reminder about crosswalks. Luckily, we haven't had too much snow this year, um, but I just want to remind everyone to be cautious that even in the cold weather, there are a lot of walkers and runners, uh, so please be aware. Um, also, one of the issues I raised last meeting was the Bartlett Street building that appears to be abandoned and, uh, it's my understanding, um, from John, that it's a town-owned building and that DPW is going to actually be, if they haven't already, board up the windows.
It was a property taken through tax title.
Yes.
And, uh, so DPW will secure it.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, what we do is, uh, we, we tend to get several of these parcels. We usually don't get too many of these, but we'll get, uh, several of them. And then, uh, if you remember a few years back, we had an auction. So, you pay an auctioneer to come in and you get rid of these, uh, and then, uh, the funds come back and essentially to come back to the town in, in the form of free cash because it's unanticipated, uh, um, uh, revenues. So, uh, we don't generally get too many parcels that are buildable. Uh, and a few years back, if you remember, we went through a lot of these at town meeting and officially accepted them and converted them into per, on a permanent basis to conservation or open space. Uh, but this one here, as we look at it, would be one that we would surplus.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great news.
Yep.
It's, it's bad in there, so I'm glad that it's, in the meantime, being boarded up and-
Yes.
You won't find anything strange, no one can get into, you know, get hurt or anything else going in.
Lot of squirrels. Lot of squirrels living in there.
Yes, I believe that.
They, they showed me some pictures and it looked like about five fifty-five gallon barrel full of like pine cones stored in there. So, people like, we think kids are in there. I'm like, nope, it's squirrels. They're just, that's where they're putting all their pine cones.
Okay. So, thank you very much for that. I also wanted to thank the Northborough Food Pantry because, um, one of their most recent entries on Facebook, uh, was the fact that, um, they were offering, um, federal furloughed employees to come in and that they could be assisted and to, there was a number that they could contact and I think that, that's wonderful and I want to thank the Northborough Food Pantry for that. And if anyone has an interest in taking things down, uh, it's nfpantry.org, um, which should be updated with items that are most necessary. So, I wanted to thank them for all their work and, and providing help for individuals. And Joe Patriots, that is my report.
Jason?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The master plan steering committee met, uh, last Thursday, January twenty-fourth. It was the second of two meetings held in January for the committee to go through, uh, each of the goals that we've developed and also in, uh, review and continue to refine the, uh, specific recommendations under each of those goals. That work is continuing and the next, uh, uh, major milestone will be another public info meeting to be held on Wednesday, uh, February thirteenth at the cafeteria of the Z School on Howard Street at six thirty PM, I believe is the time. The notice will be posted on the website, but I just wanted to give people a heads-up if, uh, if they're interested in attending that, to see what progress the committee's made and to continue to provide input, uh, uh, to the master plan. I'll also, uh, add my enthusiastic support for the Patriots in the coming weekend, uh, hoping for a good result. And, uh, I'll just briefly note, because I know Don's going to speak to it, but I'll just briefly note the passing of Larry Beatty. Larry was a member of our, uh, American Legion Post two thirty-four, very strong contributor and a very, uh, um, longtime resident and cherished member of the community. So, uh, that concludes my report.
So, building on what Jason had to say, um, Larry Beatty was a patrolman for many years in Northborough before becoming a sergeant. He was also a constable who served a, um, warrant for many, many years at town meeting. Um, he was a commander at the Legion Post and he was a, just a wonderful community member. He loved the town in Northborough that he grew up in and he, um, contributed heavily to the town and he will be missed. So, our condolences to his family and friends. So, um, the only other thing I'd like to talk about is the selection of the site for the, uh, fire station. The building committee has actually come to a recommendation, um, looking to pursue the Pierce property, um, which is the gas station across from Dunkin' Donuts. And at town meeting, there'll be a warrant article for the design and site acquisition costs and it will be presented, um, hopefully and hopefully voted favorably on. And as time gets closer, there'll be more and more presentations before town meeting. So, that concludes my report. John?
Um, so normally, uh, I wouldn't get into, uh, active litigation at, at your meetings, certainly not on the reports, but I think just publicly, I want to, uh, acknowledge a couple of things, uh, with regard to four twenty-nine Whitney Street and S.A. Farms. The town has filed a contempt of court, uh, issue against the owner, uh, for bringing in a truckload of raw turkeys that were apparently ground up on-site. Um, so, we have an existing preliminary injunction. We fi, and this is public information, uh, we filed a, uh, contempt of court, uh, complaint against him. Uh, we have filed a cease and desist order regarding four thirty-two Whitney Street and we filed a zoning, um, enforcement cease and desist order, uh, against, uh, him as well for any activity at four thirty-two Whitney Street. Again, all of these documents are a matter of, uh, public record. Uh, I am intending to send, uh, some information out to the residents and letting them know that these actions have been taken and to provide copies of the documents because I know they are, uh, anxious to, to, to know what's happening. Uh, there is more occurring that I'm not at liberty to discuss because it is active litigation, but I just think it's important publicly to, to let folks know what's, what's occurring and, and why it's occurring. Because the other thing that we talked about at our last, uh, meeting was the need to change the state laws and the legislation that allow composting and, um, exemptions for some of these activities, uh, that these exemptions, just because it's a farm or someone's claiming to be a farm, that, that, it's not right and, you know, we've had a, and again, these are discussions we've had publicly, this took place at a previous meeting, um, but we're going to, going to continue to advocate for changes with the enabling legislation at the state level. That's the root cause of the issues that we're being asked to deal with, but we can't because it falls under state statute. So, all we can do is work with our legislators and try to make, uh, uh, positive moves there. So, so again, I normally don't, uh, speak to this stuff, certainly on the reports, um, but again, these are all ma, it's all a matter of public record and I think it's important that folks know that, you know, things are being done. Uh, in fact, everything that we can be do, that we can be doing to address the issues and the concerns of the residents out there has, has taken place and will continue to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, public comments. Okay. New business.
I'm sorry, we had Don, we had John.
Oh, Joan, I'm sorry.
Uh, Joan Frank, four twenty-nine Whitney Street. I'd just like to thank the board's selectmen and John for the updates and what you've had to do behind the scenes of the problems that we've had. The neighbors have endured for four twenty-nine Whitney Street and four thirty-two. I know many times I've asked and can't say anything, so I'd just like to thank you. I know it's been taking a lot of time, a lot of litigation and I'd just like to say thank you on behalf of all the residents that are there and that have left the area. Thank you so much for what you have done. It, it is so important to all of us. It's our quality of life, it's the air that we breathe over there. So, thank you very much and the wildlife and also the trees. So, thank you and the barnets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Update on fiscal year two thousand eighteen state aid.
Okay, I'm going to try not to say told you so, but told you so. When we met in December, uh, one of the things, one of, I mean, we talked about the dashboard and the key items that we're watching in terms of setting the table for fiscal twenty. Uh, one area of concern, uh, I mentioned was state aid. And despite the fact that, um, the revenue consensus hearing that took place on December fifth between the House, the Senate and the administration, um, projected that state aid will grow at, uh, roughly to two-point-seven percent, I think was the consensus number. Uh, I said, don't get excited, we won't see anything close to that. We'll be lucky to see one percent. And the reason for that is, um, you know, when they look at things, uh, when they look at state aid, it comes in two forms. It's chapter seventy, which is probably three-quarters of it, uh, with chapter seventy is school aid. And then there's the unreserved, uh, uh, general government aid, which they renamed several years ago from lottery proceeds, which legislatively are required to go directly to towns. They, uh, historically, whenever the economy goes, uh, south and is a recession, the state will divert the lottery funds, which were passed specifically for local government, to their needs. But anyway, it's that little piece of the, uh, of the general lottery funds that are going up two-point-seven percent. Uh, in your packet, I provided you with the governor's budget, House One, which was released on, uh, I believe Wednesday, January twenty-third. And, um, our state aid, and we get roughly, you know, five-point-four million dollars in state aid, so it's a significant account. The issue is that it's just not growing. It hasn't been growing, uh, more than one or one-and-a-half percent throughout the entire recessionary recovery period. So, the issue that we face is if our budgets, as you saw from the auditor, are generally going up about three-and-a-half, four percent, well, if our state aid is only going up one or one-and-a-half percent, as a percentage of the budget, it's shrinking and it has to be made up somewhere and, and it's going to be made up in taxes. Uh, that's just the reality of our, uh, of our situation. So, House One budget was released, um, our, our five-point-four million dollar account is going to increase by forty-one thousand and forty-eight dollars. So, if you're doing that on a percentage basis, it's point seven-seven percent. Now, the budget models that I rolled out for you at our, uh, December meeting, uh, I told you that our, uh, our revenue estimate for fiscal twenty state aid is one percent. So, uh, historically, the, the governor's budget tends to be the lowest, then the state will come in and give us another five or ten thousand, which we appreciate. Uh, and, uh, by the end, I anticipate, we'll get, we'll be at one percent, which is, again, what we have assumed all along. And I know it's hard because when you listen to, uh, when you listen to the state legislature and the governor talking, you know, they're talking all these numbers, talking about percentage growth on certain accounts. And you can, you know, and you can look at all those accounts. All I'm concerned with is when, that, when it all comes together across all those lines, what does it mean for Northborough? Sitting here today, it's point seven-seven percent. So, about three-quarters of one percent increase, roughly forty-one thousand dollars. So, um, it's not, uh, it's not a surprise. It's what we planned on. I wish it were more, um, but again, this is a, the first glimpse of an official state aid number and we won't know our actual state aid until long after town meeting. So, I don't anticipate modifying my projections for state aid as the budget process moves So, I don't anticipate modifying my projections for state aid as the budget process moves forward. I think 1% is a solid assumption, and we'll proceed accordingly. But I did want to give the board this update, because the governor did attend the conference and spoke to these, and these numbers are official in terms of what he's released. So, I can answer any questions anybody might have, but as I said, it's pretty much exactly what we anticipated based on our projections.
Any questions, Leslie?
Just a comment. I think, first of all, I just want to thank you for being conservative, John, budgeting conservatively and being in tune enough that you could literally predict this. It saves us all, and you and your departments, from having to run around and redo and rethink and re-present and so forth. So, I'd much rather come in from this and then the other way around. So, I tend to be an eternal optimist, but I think in this case, it's great that you're...
A pragmatist, so...
Yes. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Jason?
Just making the observation, we won't know the real number until after our town meeting, at which point we will have made our appropriations for the following fiscal year. So, any additional increase from the state would just be used to reduce the tax rate, is that correct?
Yes, and this is why, and I appreciate that question. So, the question is, what happens if we actually get a little more state aid than we budgeted? I'm very fond of saying, if we get to town meeting and the state legislature and the House and the Senate, when they finally get their budget completed sometime, you know, our town meeting is the fourth Monday in April, May or June, we usually get our final number. And again, if we don't, instead of 1%, sometimes we'll get 1.5%. So, you're talking about $25,000 or $30,000, hardly something you're going to reconvene town meeting and it's going to make a material difference in your expenditure. But the beauty of it is, if you're conservative on your state aid numbers, and we're really right, right there, where we typically are very, very close to what we wind up with, any additional funds that we get, when we go to set the tax rate at the tax classification hearing in November, those funds automatically get applied and reduce the tax impact. So, there is no downside to the taxpayers. And again, another $20,000 or $25,000 isn't material on a $60 million budget to where you'd reconvene to, you know, to spend that money. Again, we're not budgeting that close. If you are, you're in trouble.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, John. Okay, presentation of first-place award certificates for the 2017 annual town report. John?
All right. So, I had leaked, let the cat out of the bag, a couple of meetings back when we got the notice from the MMA, but this past weekend, at the Mass Municipal Conference, we did receive officially our first-place award.
Great.
And, you know, this is, the significance of this, and I just want to read one piece out of the MMA. This is, so this is for our annual report. Those of you that don't know, this is the document. This is sort of like the audit for what we did for the year. We talk, every department talks about all their achievements, everything that we accomplished in the previous year. This particular design, the judge really liked, because it's also a calendar. So, we used to produce tons of these annual reports, and they're a little dry, good information, but a little dry, and we used to recycle cases of them. Now, we put them out at town meeting, we put them out here, we put them out at the library, and people see them, and they're designed very, very, to be very user-friendly, and again, they're calendars. So, I love going into, like, local businesses and seeing one of these hang up, hanging up on the wall. You know when Apple Fest is, you know when the schools are closed, you know when things specific to Northborough are going to be occurring. So, I just want to read just briefly, the MMA judging criteria for the annual townwide report includes cover design and layout, logical arrangement of material, presentation of statistics and data, summaries of the town's achievements and evidence of local planning for future, and the practical utility of the report, which enhances citizens' understanding of town government. And here's the thing, Northborough is 14,000, 15,000 population, right? They have different categories, so there's categories for small towns up to 5,000, 5 to 10. We fall just over the line. Anything over 12,999, so 13,000, is all in the same, is in this big category. So, we're in the category with Concord and Wellesley and Arlington and Brookline, all these communities. And there's, the staff does this. You know, we have somebody who lays it out, but we write it, we edit it, and Diane Whackel is our coordinator for the town, and she does a phenomenal job. But to me, the little town of Northborough took first place out of all those larger communities, and I think it just shows our dedication to producing great information, great documents, and putting this stuff out there in a user-friendly format for residents. So, this is our official, our official award, and we have one spot along this nice row here. Conveniently located in the center. We're going to put that right there. So, again, I just, I hope, and I know that you guys are appreciative of the work that the staff does to bring in this level of excellence. I want to, for the third time, specifically recognize Diane, who came with me in Boston to have our picture taken with the director and the president of the MMA. This picture's in your packet. And again, this is something I think, particularly for a community our size, we should be very proud of.
Thank you, John. Thank you, all the staff that put it together, and particularly Diane, who does a lot of time agonizing over the pictures, layout, and getting it printed, and do you have a cover for this year? Okay. If anybody has any good ideas, comes up with a great idea, Diane would probably love to hear it. So, any other conversation or discussion? Yes, Leslie?
I've asked this before, but I really feel like we could use something on that wall that holds these plaques. What I worry about is someone's going to accidentally hit those glass cabinets, and they're all going to slide back behind, onto the floor.
I fished two of them out last night.
Okay. That's what I worry about. I feel like it's a little precarious over there, but we have so many beautiful plaques and awards and things. Is there something that we can do that has grooves in it that would hold them steady, or...
Well, I'll have to come up with something.
Something would be, would be nice. Maybe something at Old Gotham. I don't know if it could be a project with the, with the kids who would take, you know, the classes over there with the woodshop and things.
Sure.
Might be kind of a cool thing for them to try and do. So, Jason?
I just wanted to mention, too, this isn't the one and only time you've won this award. This is like, at least the third. I think there was another first place and a fourth time.
Yes.
Once again, it's not just a one-and-done kind of thing, it's a continuing pursuit of excellence in trying to put this together, and also competing against the larger communities across the state to do it. So, to be a multiple award winner of this is saying a lot as well. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you. Okay. Wood discussion regarding petition letter received at the December 17, 2018 selectmen's meeting. I'd like to start with John.
So, the petition that was received, there were a number of suggestions, was received by the board, placed on the agenda for this evening. What I thought I would do, and I distributed it to you tonight just before the meeting, is try to put together a little bit of information to frame up some of these issues, so you know where we stand on a few things. I think there are a few items that are going to require action by the board, and things that you're going to want to put on a future agenda for discussion. But there's a couple of points here I'd just like to go through quickly, and again, just to provide a little bit of context. The first was the assessment of the town agenda and meeting minutes. I have to say, I was surprised by the online audit particularly. So, we have appropriations for financial planning members that are here tonight, and one of the indications was that their minutes were woefully out of date. And I was shocked by that, since I'm the one that takes the minutes, and I do the minutes at those meetings, and I know they're approved. The long and short of it is, as we looked down the list, and I had the town clerk go through, and go through everything to see, to do basically kind of an audit of where we are, what became evident to me was, what we have are some administrative oversights in terms of approved minutes not getting posted up on the website. Now, one of these awards up here is actually from Common Cause, and it was the E-Government Award with Distinction that the town of Northborough got specifically for its commitment to open government and posting key records online. So, we were early adopters of this, but somewhere along the lines, people get busy, and you have some administrative oversight. Some of these, the minutes aren't getting up online, so I've rectified that. I've had a conversation with the town clerk, and I've asked him to watch as agendas get posted moving forward, that he follow up, make sure that the minutes get posted as well. And just so we're clear, it's not an open meeting law violation to, because minutes aren't on the website, but it is a good practice, and we love good, we love best practices. So, all these minutes that were, that seemed to be missing, were missing from, largely just missing from the website. And so, those are now all up, and moving forward, the town clerk has been tasked with making sure that they continue to remain current, because it is a best practice, and we set it up that way, because we want this information to be easily accessible. So, moving forward, I see that issue as being, being basically resolved. In terms of committee and board appointments, this is the selectmen's policy. My recommendation to you is that you, your policy, you've followed the same policy for 30 years. The actual written policy has been in place since 1996, that's 23 years. So, but my suggestion is that you place this on a future agenda, maybe next, your next meeting, and to review it, to see if any of the suggestions that were recommended are some things that you want to entertain, and if there are any improvements that you want to make. So, that would be my suggestion. However, I do want to make sure that anybody that's listening or is interested in serving on a board or committee, we do not want to make this any more difficult than possible, because we have more volunteer opportunities than we have people willing to serve. That's always the case. We have over 30 boards and committees in this town. If you go to the town's webpage on the left-hand side, and click on Boards and Committees, it takes you to a page that lists out all the boards and committees. At the top of that page, there's a Board and Committee Information Center. If you click on that, you can see who's on the committee, how to contact them, you can see when their terms expire, you can see when there are vacancies, and you can also apply right online to volunteer to serve on one of those boards and committees. So, this is a module that's on our website, and by the way, our website is a virtual town hall. So, virtual town hall is this template software that 225 municipalities in Massachusetts use. So, this is a template that we use. We're in the process, as you know, here's the other thing, we're in the process of updating our website to a whole new platform with additional functionality, and as you're also aware, the town was lucky enough to apply for and receive a $40,000 community compact grant to do a comprehensive MIT, or IT MIS strategic plan, part of which is looking at our web presence and the functionality of our website. So, these are projects that were in the works prior to receiving the letter, but it drives home why we were applying for that grant and why we are anticipating making these improvements, because we recognize these are some, some things that we want to improve upon. And again, communication, and certainly people who want to participate in volunteering on a board or committee, we want to make that as easy and painless as we possibly can. The other item was, it was a suggestion regarding PEG access services. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that we are currently in negotiation with both Verizon and Charter for renewals for our cable licenses. And we've got a couple of things going on right now. The industry, as you know, we discussed this at your meeting, when we had Charter and Cable in here as part of the ascertainment process for these renewals. We know that the industry's changing, and as we sit down and negotiate, they're showing us that revenues from cable are going down, because kids like mine, who are 17 and 16 years old, don't really even know what cable is, because if they can't stream it on their phone or their tablet, you know, they're really not interested. They don't want to sit down and actually use a cable box. So, as people cut the cord, this whole revenue source for our PEG access is somewhat in jeopardy, and this isn't unique to Northborough. I provided you with articles three meetings ago, from the executive director of the Mass Municipal Association, specifically talking about this issue. So, right now, an average user, a cable user, subscriber, pays about $5.37 a month for PEG access. It's about $60 a year that is a fee that's a straight pass-through. If you look on your bill, it comes right through and they pay it. PEG access is not free. It's off-budget, in that it's not by tax revenues, but it's not fee, it's not free. The residents, and particularly the people who haven't cut the cord, are the ones that are paying it. As that group shrinks, the security of this revenue source is being called into question. So, we can talk about what we're going to do with the limited revenues that we will get. I'd like to see where we get through the contract before we start talking about expanding services. Right now, for fiscal '19, the PEG access budget is roughly $361,000. That's more money than we spend on the selectmen's office, the town administrator's office, the treasurer collector's office, the town clerk's office, town council, planning conservation, border health, building inspectors, the senior center, the rec. department, family use services, and the veterans office, or the veterans office. Not all those combined, but any one of those offices. This is a significant revenue commitment, and when, and we talk about this when we meet in December, about we shake the snow globe, what are we looking at for revenues? Because we need to be realistic when we plan. Well, this is an area where the revenues for PEG access are in question and in jeopardy, and I can tell you right now, we do not have $361,000 in general tax revenue to backfill should these revenues dry up. And I'm not saying they're going to dry up overnight, but I can tell you in the negotiations with the cable companies, they want to tie how much money they give us directly to the number of subscribers. So, every time someone cuts the cord, your revenues will go down, where historically, they've been pretty straightforward and consistent. So, for, I just want people to have, as always, when you're making decisions about the level of services, you need to have the context of what's happening. So, right now, I am most interested in getting those contracts signed and settled to know where we are before we start expanding PEG access services in any way, shape, or form, because I think it is an area of concern.
I just wanted to make the clarification, when you're talking about cable subscribers, you're talking about precisely cable subscribers.
Yes.
Not people who have internet service.
Yeah. So, this is a tough spot, because the FCC regulates, you know, cable licenses, and the town cannot add surcharges to phone or internet or voice-over IP. It's specifically old-school cable. And that's the issue that is happening across the state, and really the country as a whole, is the industry is evolving, and that revenue source is potentially disappearing. So, unless at the state or federal level, these revenues are secured, we could find ourselves running very short in terms of supporting our current level of services. So, again, it's just context, something to be cognizant of. So, again, my priority at the moment is making sure that we can lock these contracts up. You know, cable contracts, when I started negotiating these 25 years ago, they were all at least 10- or 15-year contracts. Our last, our last contract with Charter was a 10-year contract. We're being told, at least by one of the providers, that because of the evolving and changing industry, that they don't want to commit to more than a five-year contract. So, you know, again, industry's on the move, that's the context we just need to be, have in our, in our minds as we look at, how are we going to spend these limited revenues? And again, they're fees, and they're fees that people are paying, you know, if you want to avoid the fee, you cut the cable and you go to an online subscription. Raise the fees, again, it's a component of the bill that all adds to this cyclical situation we find ourselves in. So, again, I just wanted people to be aware of that.
If, as long as we're asking questions, as we go topic to topic, so, just to, for us to put this in perspective, if we recorded, say, three more committees, what would that look like in dollars?
I don't know. We'd have to look at, because you have to have staff to come in. Again, it's not, we'd have to look at it, how much it would cost to have somebody come in. It's just the staff, like, right now, behind that lovely big box in the corner, we have Terry Kreen. Will you see a hand come up? Hi, Terry. Terry is managing the cameras to tape this. Like everything else, we also have, we also have an unlimited, almost, number of requests from, from community groups, particularly schools, to cover events and things of that nature. We can't cover everything that's being asked of us now. I'm not saying we can't do things differently, but I just want the context of, in this, in this case here, my concern is that we're going to have enough revenues to support what we're doing today, and that is, that's a legitimate concern.
Well, I think at some point, looking at those numbers would be helpful, too, if you could.
Sure. The next was, there was some discussion about open meeting law training. Just want to be clear, we have offered open meeting law training in the past. We worked, most recently, with the town of Southborough, where they put on training, and we made sure that folks were able to go. and we made sure that folks were able to go. But, conflict of interest in open meeting law training is something we take very seriously. We have offered in the past, we will offer again in the future. But, here's the key, it's up to the individual. So, you serve on a board or committee, it's up to you to make sure that you understand those, those laws and are complying with them. We are happy to offer training and as they become available regionally, we'll certainly send notices out as we always have. But, I just want to point something out because the state requires when you get on a board or committee or you hire as a new employee, to go through the conflict of interest training and, and, and to sign off that you received the open meeting law training. We're now required by the state to track that in the town clerk's office. I don't know how many of you realize this, but we actually required that as a town years before the state ever mandated it because it is important and it's something that we're cognizant of and that we are, take seriously. So, we did, we used to, we, we've done trainings, but you know, people are always coming and going, particularly from volunteer boards and committees. And that's why we make sure that they get this information and that if they have any questions and if they want training, we're happy to provide training on that. The last, just kind of general comment, you know, about transparency and communication, I just want to, I just want to stress to the board and to the public that nobody takes transparency and communication more seriously than, than, than us. And, and I think the evidence isn't in the words. The evidence is in the award-winning budget, eight consecutive years in a row, the clean audits, which by the way are all on the webpage. If anybody wants them, go to the town accountant's website. You can go back and read every management letter for the last 10 years and the documents like, you know, the annual report. And we've also, again, we have a commitment to, we're early adopters of putting stuff online. We're in the process of updating the webpage. This is all good stuff. This is all stuff that we're doing as a matter of course and, and regardless of, you know, receiving a, a letter or suggestions, I think we need to look at these suggestions, decide what makes sense and, and, and accommodate them as, as, as makes sense. But, I, I just can't stress enough that these are things that we do on a day-to-day basis that are important to us and I think we're very good at it. And we will continue to, to focus on these things moving forward. So, again, I just wanted to have, provide that context, at least on those issues that, jumped out at me as I read the letter.
Thank you, John. Questions, Leslie?
So, what can we put on the next agenda as far as this, this list of concerns here?
My intention, intention for the next agenda would be the Board and Committee Appointments and formalizing a policy. It hasn't been looked at since, would you say?
1996.
1996. So, I think we should do that next with suggestions from John after input from Town Council on what we can do and what we need to do to update our policy. So, that would be my intention for the next meeting.
By the way, if I, if I may, through the chair, online, Section 9 of the Town Code are, are your policies. The Board of Selectment policies have been adopted over, over the years. Some, you know, have probably not been looked at in a while. Others like this, you know, has worked again for 30 years, but there's a suggestion to change and we may want to, to look at some things to make sure that we are in compliance with the open meeting law and that if we're, if we're forming, you know, subcommittees and they're going to be working, then, then by all means, we should be in, in compliance and conformance with that, so. But, if you look online under Section 9, you'll see the policy. If anybody needs me to send them a link or you have trouble finding it, let me know. I'd be happy to send it to you.
Any other comments? Julia?
Well, I would like to thank the 123 residents who gave us these valuable suggestions on how we can improve. And I want to thank you, John, for analyzing it and kind of clearing things up. Moving forward, I would, I would hope that this would be a conversation with, with the people in town and how they feel that they are getting information. And so, specifically, I'm wondering if, when we, for example, redo the website, could we have, for example, a focus group of residents who look at it as, you know, as, as we design it and make sure that it is doing what we, we want it to do? It's like, I, I feel like some of this stuff is just like having a proofreader read your, your paper. You know what you want to say, but you have to make sure that you're clear.
Sure. You know, the, the software we're moving to, so again, this is a platform that just enables you to, to put your content up. It's up to you to decide what content and, and how frequently it goes up. I think the platform is solid. The platform is, is changing. One of the, one of the main things we, we need to address with our website is to make it more, more, more bio-friendly, like, you know, for phones and tablets because, you know, the majority of people now aren't surfing the website from a computer. They're doing it from their phone or from a tablet. But, there's some other functionality that is being built into the system, some other modules, and so we want to, we obviously want to, want to look at those. And again, I think I'd be, I'd be open to listening to what people want to see. I think there has to be some, some balance. And I'm just going to share one story with you. So, I was at the MMA conference this weekend, right, where we got our award. I was at for a drop one more time. I was at the MMA conference. I went to a workshop on, on social media. I listened to this wonderful program on social media, right? Well, the town has a full-time social media coordinator who sends out 120, I couldn't believe, 120 tweets a day and updates their Facebook page at least six times a day and searches content, full-time person. Okay? I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind in the town of Northborough and why I'm so proud of the things that we've accomplished on our budgets and our annual reports is we don't have a lot of depth to the bench here. Okay? It's, it's me, Kim Foster, the Assistant Town Administrator, Jason Little, the Town Accountant, you know, there's a couple of people. We have an MIS Director, we have two people. And one of the things that we're looking at as part of the strategic plan for the grant that I just mentioned that we received from the state is, is to look at, should we outsource something? What, what can we outsource? What's the balance between employees and outsourcing and what's reasonable for us to take on? Because the only thing worse than not doing something is to take it on and do it poorly. And if you create an expectation that information is going to be put out on a regular basis on a certain platform, you need to make sure that you do that and you do it well. And so, I'm very cautious about over-commitment because frankly, at the moment, and I've shared this with probably each of you at some point in, as individuals, and I was talking to a, a former member earlier, is, you know, right now, we are as staff stretched as thin as we've ever been. We have so many large, significant projects. We talked about White Cliffs. We talked about the Fire Station Building Project. You know, we have a classification compensation study going on that's impacting every single employee that's taking up a ton of time in our, in our office. We have a master plan that's going on. Typically, in any given year, you know, remember now, we're running a $60 million corporation with all the day-to-day stuff and the services that we provide. But, in addition to that, you want to have a certain amount of your time that you spend towards improving, to take on special projects, to do things like budget awards and annual reports and, and to redo the website, things of that nature. Each one of those projects takes a commitment from staff that has a day job. We don't have the luxury of a larger community where we just have people to throw at these projects. And right now, my concern, a very sincere concern, and I can tell you this, have been, having been here for 16 years, we have never had so many large projects that are taking up so much of our, special projects that are taking so much of our time to the point where the day-to-day is getting hard to meet all these demands. Now, if this is a sustained level, then we need to talk about adding resources and staff. If it is a bubble of projects, it's a, in my opinion, right now, it's a bubble of projects. Like, the master plan is not something you do every year. A class comp study is something you do every five to 10 years. White Cliffs fell out of the sky, wasn't a part of my overall planning of that was going to be a project that I was going to be working on. And then, under my reports, I talked about all of the issues that we've had with this composting situation. That situation alone has taken up 25% of my time, me personally. Your town administrator's spending 25% of his time for the last year on that issue in one form or another. And I think some of that stuff needs to be acknowledged and it needs to be balanced. And again, I'm never going to tell you we can't do things. My goal is to improve the organization. I'm very proud of this organization. I'm proud of the community. I want to do everything that I can. But, I can tell you right now that my staff, particularly Kim, the Assistant Town Administrator, and the financial team, you know, the finance, the other thing is our finance director's retiring. We're down 25% of our very small finance team. So, there's a lot of stuff going on right now. And so, I would just, I hope that the board appreciate what's, what we're still able to achieve, give us a little bit of time to work through some of this bubble and understand that things like the website was something I wanted to do this past fall and working with the staff and we just couldn't get to it because of all the things that I just mentioned. So, and I'm happy to talk about this in any depth that any of you want individually or as a presentation to the board. But, but again, it's all good stuff, but there's just a lot of it right now and I think that there needs to be some sense of, you know, we need to get through this hump of, you know, instead of having one or two special projects, we have about eight. That's just the, the reality of the situation.
Jason?
Yeah, John, I just wanted to mention that you left out collective bargaining this year and also municipal agreement, wastewater treatment agreement.
Yes, we have litig, yes. These are, those are two of the other eight that we have.
The list is longer than you mentioned, right? So, and I would emphasize myself that as a member of this board, and I think the board would share that sentiment, we want the staff focused on the most important things that are needed in the shorter timeframe here. So, if we're talking about collective bargaining agreements, the current budget cycle, Fire Station, plus the litigation requirements, which, you know, are unavoidable, that's, that's the workload and that's where the staff's attention needs to be focused right now. So, appreciate all the hard work by everybody. I know.
Thank you.
There's a lot of time, a lot of hours, extra hours being put in by the staff. I don't think anyone understands that or realizes it, but I understand it and realize it and I want to be sure that people out there know that this is the hardest working staff in the state. So, you're getting great value for your money. Just like to make that point.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments.
Owen, as far as somebody that's been on this board for a long time, the transparency is something that I think we're more transparent now than ever, thanks to you and thanks to the work that everybody has done in the town hall. So, we continue to work at it. We want to be transparent. It's been the word that's been used for the last few years quite often and I know that we're continuing to improve and the new website will keep us going, but I'm glad that you put this together and it would be your intention to send this to the residents?
Yeah, yeah. Again, it's just at least some basic feedback acknowledgement if they took the time to sign something and send it to us that I would, I, I wanted to send them something back to acknowledge and, and also I'll probably modify it to let people know that the board's going to take up at either your next meeting or subsequent meeting, the, the appointment policy. I think that's a reasonable, a more than reasonable response.
Owen, I thank you for doing this and I think it does a lot to say to the residents that we do take their concerns seriously. So, thank you. Any other comments, Leslie?
Yeah, two things. John, I do want to thank you for enumerating your projects. I think it's, I've been hoping that you would do that.
Look, I'm not one to complain.
I know. But, I think it's important for you to, to go through that list from time to time so that people are reminded about the workload that you and your staff have here. And it also goes through the list of priorities for people, so I think it's very important for people to hear that. And I also do agree that I think it's important for us to acknowledge that people that did have concerns with this letter. I know Mitch Cohen is here and he's the one that provided the letter and the information to us at the last meeting. And it, to be honest, it took me by surprise at first. I was kind of dumbfounded when I looked at it, but I think there are some interesting issues in there and things that are definitely worth looking at. I mean, all the things are definitely worth looking at. And to be honest, I wasn't really aware of all the minute situations that some were a little bit behind and some were not and so forth, but I think it's definitely important to acknowledge that there are some wonderful issues that you listed there and reiterate to what John and Dawn and Jason said too, that I think that there is never, since I've been involved in the board, never deliberate attempt to not be transparent, you know, to hide something or hope that we can get something through and nobody notices. I, I think about the volunteer and, and the boards and committee situation and, you know, there were years where you couldn't find people to do anything. There were so many openings and you were so glad to have a warm body to come in and, and they were interested enough to have looked online or saw something on cable that they could maybe apply for. So, you know, we were so happy about that. And so, but I think it's probably time to look at that policy in terms of, you know, how we get the PR out and how we handle the interviews. So, I think those are valid points. So, thank you very much. Thanks.
Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Any other business to come before the board?
First time you had need a executive session in a while, so I'm happy to say nothing. No need for an executive session this evening.
Okay. I hear a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Open session.
Second.
Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor. Thank you. Thank you all.